We were at your camper, you just did a good morning Saturday. And when I waited too long, Saturday pulled up, I was going through everything most time till I went to my shower head. And turned it on, it started just blowing all over the place. My head froze up, big chunk ice there, cracked all the plastic around it. My head was alive, it was on. Well, I said, you know, you didn't spend that much on the camper. That wouldn't break. But no, it's done fine.
The bushes were most important.
We shipped them earlier.
They're ours two weeks ago.
Doing camp in two weeks ago.
This is several of the fencing. He said the fence was sixty foot. He said we're going to install it. He said, well, I don't know what it is. He said the deck has been replaced because it's. And I said, and then the slide was last for a year. And I said, no, this is like some. I thought it was a house thing, he said, well, someone who lives in some of the city. You know, he said, like, this is going to be more insulated or more asphalt. I'm not saying, you know, because it's just the best class on the slide. So what's the, so what's the words? Some, whatever that's in the.
Doesn't look like we have a room for people.
My stuff, we're not doing stuff.
You can tell that father. Oh, dear.
Yeah.
Shuffle after the dad. Hey, Martin, solve that for me.
Oh, yeah, Bruce, seven o'clock to start.
We're good anytime.
We need a caller over there. Everybody's here, right?
Yep.
Well, let me introduce this little handout that I put up for the room. We've got a, just a basic outline of procedure of how this is intended to be run. Thought it would be useful for the chairman to have a clean layout and make sure everybody understood the plan. And they're ran it by the city officials and by the chairman. And everyone seemed to think this could work. So the intention, if you look at the little list, is the applicants will present and take whatever reasonable time is necessary to go through their application and tell you what they have in mind. And then the board will leave questions. And then we'll see if there are other presentations, but hopefully those will be somehow limited. The chairman will have to deal with some type of time limit, the suggestion in the material. Five minutes if somebody wishes to speak. And after that, we'll take those comments back to the board's ideas and see if they have any other questions. Try and just do all of that once. And then at some point, the board will have a hearing and conduct a vote on whatever they want to do, recommend yes or no. So I would think whenever you're ready, just invite them to begin their presentation and they can tell you.
Let's kind of start. Do you want to start with your app? And we'll just kind of basically work through it.
Sure, I'll just introduce everybody staying up to the table so you kind of have an awareness. And then Travis is going to walk through our application. I'm Brittany Brackway, I'm the team decision and government relations specialist. I'm out of Omaha, and we have Brock Taylor, who is our land manager.
Brock Houston.
Uh, Houston, former Omaha. And then I've got Alisa Redon, who is our security specialist. And then I've got Travis Sims here, and he actually, his K L J puts me under the application with his colleague Nikki. So I'll go ahead and give him the floor and let him start.
Yeah, thank you. So one of the key differences from the prior application to this one is the forward contemplating possibility of a camp as well with contractor yard. Now we're focused on just the contractor yard component. Brock can touch on it a little bit later, but one of the big things is just, you know, looking at your overall build plan, staff, and these things like that. Lodging the housing plan updates, right now the focus is through just getting the contractor yard piece done. Not the camp, I don't believe we feel it's going to be necessary for twenty first, next year's build. So at this point, you know, we'll set the contractor yard piece separated from the camp. And we're focused on just the yard, which is going to be the credit for twenty twenty one building. So with that, all the elements of the application are going to be the same as what you've seen before. With some slight differences as we work our way through because some of the stuff isn't relevant to, you know, just contractor yard only or changes with it becoming a contractor yard only. So the application itself is the same application as we used before. With the same, our intent also remains the same, that right now TC Energy and the landowner are the applicant for this S U P. With the intent that the contractor that ultimately gets the work, they'll be the one that actually carries it forward and executes under the provisions of the permit. So within the application itself, we have your standard application filled out. We have a summary of your criteria for, you know, the development requirements and land use requirements, along with a brief summary of how we feel those are achieved. And some other kind of gloss over that right now, or skip past that right now, with the intent that when I go through these other sections, they'll address many of these items. And if we need to come back and address any of them in more detail, just.
You want to do it that way or how you want?
However you.
You want to just go down the line?
However you prefer.
Because we got to kind of do that anyway.
Yeah, that'd be just fine.
You know, if you want to work on it that direction.
Yeah, that's fine. So going, just going through your criteria, pay a twelve one, from a development density standpoint, we're not going to be putting housing out there. Like I said, this is just going to be a contractor yard only. So we'll have some equipment out there, fencing, security guards, so on, checkpoints. But there isn't going to be permanent housing out there. There'll be some office trailers for the contractors' uses there, you know, having people come and go, checking out equipment or moving equipment in and off site, checking people and bagging them. But there won't be any housing or dwellings out there.
Yeah, I just got one simple question.
Yeah.
You know, I know your office here, you got marked here. That's going to be a portable rig.
Yeah.
How big is it?
We have that figured out yet. No, the number of trailers and the size aren't set yet. Intendedly, we were, tentatively, they were looking at two double wides and one single wide was the last I heard. But the actual trailer locations and the final number.
Okay, you plan on lodging them in that square?
Yeah, roughly in that area. So the overall site plan though, there may be some tweaks still to it yet, so one.
But it'll be in that general?
Yeah, generally, we're going to have it up to the north with the intent and hope of eventually connecting in with city plan due for water sewer utilities.
So you got that part?
Yeah, so we want to keep those up to the north so that we're closer to utilities. That might shift a little bit east still when we get the final done, but we're still working through some of that. One of the big changes from the site plan is a result of discussions with Nebraska D O T. They have required us to shift the access point down to the southeast corner of the site. So we can get you guys an updated plan with that, you know.
Had to be this, this drive here, right?
Yes, sir. It's directly across from the intersection down there.
How is that going to affect your, I think you're going to put like, what, drainage ditch catch here for runoff?
Yeah, the entire east side will essentially be detention pond to where we're really not going to use the east side along the highway. Other than we'll strip topsoil where we need to put gravel down, firm it up along the east to build up that detention. And then it'll back up into the eastern part of the yard where it's generally unusable for storm area. And then west, the west half of the site is essentially our usable area for contractor yard now.
You got some kind of a overflow on that, just in case we get one of our famous eight inch rains in fifteen minutes?
Yes, so.
Probably want to let them.
Oh, no, yeah, you're fine, however you guys want, so. But yes, we'll, we'll have overflow as well. Everything's going to be designed for, I believe it was a ten year storm event that will have no increase in pre-development flows. And then a hundred year event that we wouldn't be flooding structured buildings.
I'll let you take a look, you know, I'm sorry.
Well, but you did raise a good point for us. So with Nebraska D O T asking us to shift that access down to the southeast, the site plan, we're having to shift a just a little bit. So where you see the green for gravel surface, that's still generally hold. But we're actually also extending that gravel surface to the south in terms of our stormwater analysis. TC's only planning on gravel and five acres of it, but since I didn't know where it was going to go, exactly what else we'd need to do with any access road, et cetera, for our stormwater, I'm just assuming that basically that west side of the site is gravel because that would give us our worst case flows in terms of sizing and detention. And then when we actually would shrink it down to our final, we're covered in terms of our cold side and stormwater facility, et cetera. The other big thing is the, with the access shifting to the south, we're basically using that entire south side of the property to allow vehicles to come in, get off the highway, not back up traffic. And then a parking area in the southwest corner. And then as a result, we'll have separate fencing to where then they would, they would park, get out of their vehicles, and then go badge in and walk into the contractor yard at that point. Again, with the intent, get everybody off the road and off the highway so they're not creating the hazard for you guys. So in terms of site development, like I said, mainly it's, it's the contractor yard now, so it's going to be some minimal grading. We're thinking three temporary job trailers at this point. And then otherwise, there's going to be guard shack, some security fencing, and then equipment parked in, in the yard area itself. The type of equipment and how much is sitting there is going to ebb and flow as they work their way through the project. And, you know, the various crews come in, different equipment will be stored there and then moved out and shifted down the line as they make their way down the right away buildings by twenty. In terms of operating, we're generally looking at roughly five to seven in the morning. We're expecting kind of a peak with people coming in to come in, park, badge in, get on their buses, and go out to the pipeline right away. Work generally twelve hour shifts and then again come back in the evening, five to seven roughly is where we're going to be seeing the big peaks. Where they come in, get back in their vehicles, and then head back to wherever they're going to sit in the evening. Just something to point out real quick, not, not everybody will be bused. Some people will be driving their own vehicles, depending on what their function will be. Yeah, so like the welders, for example, they have their own trucks and would just go drive out from the contractor yard or potentially from where they're staying and head straight out to the right away. So. The other thing would be his Brock notes, so we'll have security out there. But there's going to be some people that would be there for different hours than that five, those two five to seven windows. So I don't want to give the impression that there's not going to be anybody out there. Otherwise, there'll be folks out there throughout the day, you know, the contractors keeping track of their staff, doing their planning for pipeline administration type of stuff. And then additionally, when they're gone in the evenings, you know, lots of security folks out there and things like that. So the five to seven windows are the peak periods where everybody, you know, the high majority of people will be coming in and then we. In terms of public facilities, so like I said, we're working with Nebraska D O T for the access. But in addition to that, we've been talking to them about a utility crossing for water and sewer service. So when we were here before, we were talking about much larger volumes on the water, wastewater than we are now. As it stands now, we're still, we would still like to connect to the city. But for the water side, it's just going to be mainly for those three trailers. And then we would also be using it to fill up some trucks so there would be additional revenue there for the city in terms of the water sales for the bulk water to load out the trucks, they fill up, and then head out to the right away in the morning. And then during the day, you're basically just have the sanitary facilities for the trailers themselves. So it should be pretty minimal wastewater volume, but we'd still like to connect in with the city system so we're not having to, you know, mess the pole in our way. If for some reason things didn't work out, we could do that if we had to, but we'd prefer just a direct connection. With the wastewater, since it is such a small volume now, we would expect we could probably just utilize it as existing wet station. From some preliminary discussions with Kurt and Dan Forbes on P B C design, what we were told was just basically hit your crossing permit in place with the O T. And if they're good with it, then we'll talk and all the exact, you know, the details of, we know where you're tying in, but the details of what you need to do if anything, to actually provide that service for us, so. So that one hasn't been finalized yet because they found Kurt was thinking it was a little premature from my understanding of talking to Dan, so. Stormwater, like we said, we're generally designed for ten year, no increase in flows, hybrid year, not flooding any buildings. And that's, that's kind of the high level overview, I guess, on the summary of criteria. Any specific questions on all that?
Yeah, one quick, one thing quick.
Yeah.
The fence thing you're going to put up, I take it it's just a wire woven?
Basically, security fence.
Yeah, just like the, the wire mesh with.
You're going to put barbed wire on it?
Yeah, barbed wire.
It is chain link fence. We require eight to ten foot for the contractor to place in, and then it does have barbed wire along the top.
No, the, the one that runs along the east over here by thirteen, is that going to have the woven stuff in so you can't see through it or not?
No, that is not in the plan.
So right now, we were planning on, that's where we're going to stockpile most of the topsoil that's served from the site. We put it all along the east side, that provides an area there for visual area.
One, one practical question, I guess, not my field really, but from the standpoint of water to fill trucks. Don't we have a water fill station somewhere here in town? No? A big, a public water station if somebody wants to call up and fill five yards?
Use firemen.
That's all? There's not a, there's not a water station done?
Okay. Cause I'll take it you're filling on like semi-trailers.
Yeah, and so, yeah.
Cannon rigs.
Yeah, just so we aren't creating a scenario where, you know, we're putting a big draw in your system where it's an on off type scenario for any sort of truck filling and stuff. They just take a normal service line over as large as you guys would be willing to accommodate. But then we could have tankage on site where the on demand filling is coming from that tank. And then the service itself is just keeping that tank full. That way you're not getting the big surges causing issues for people in the mornings, things like that. And that stuff's not depicted yet just because we don't, until we have the detail exactly on, you know, what sideline, how, how much Kurt thinks we can get at an instantaneous drop, and stuff like that. Then we can decide the tanks for them or not to cause any issues for them.
So it's mainly going to have equipment parked in, huh?
What's that?
It's mainly going to be equipment parked in there?
Yes, sir.
You know, pile of pipes and boxes.
You might, you might have some recruits have George later down. You will have some equipment, but by and large, most people will be on the right away. You'll have guys that come in every morning for the daily morning meeting. Top, we go there, safety moments, we talk about lessons learned out on the right away. And then after that morning, kind of pre-work meeting, those guys head out. And then, so you'll have, you'll have vehicles sitting there, and you'll have some equipment here and there, trucks loading up water. It's basically kind of a hub for the, the spread.
Is there no fuel or used oil or anything like that going to be stored there?
From a fuel standpoint, there will be some fueling, like possibly like a mobile refueler and things like that for the equipment itself.
There's no permanent tanks sitting anywhere, sir?
No, that's not on our plan at this point, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, the administrator just mentioned to me, we hadn't, in so many words, said officially the hearing is open. And you opened your meeting, you kind of went right into the hearing, but why don't you just for the record, so of course.
For the record, we're, we'll put you in the hearing.
Anything that's brought in, it's going to be of the temporary nature. So there wouldn't be any sort of, uh, structure.
Yeah, so like you wouldn't have a buried underground tank, for example?
Well, that's, I've got a lot to get now.
So now you guys said you have contractors that come in and they do the, they actually do the grading and everything?
Yeah, so, yeah, for the site construction itself, yeah. So that part they haven't bid out in the order yet, but that selection process is still underway. But yeah, they would, they would utilize contractors to come in, strip all topsoil, do the rough grading, get everything the way we need to. You know, put the gravel down where it's needed to, get culverts installed, drainage rails, got things like that. And sort of temporary stabilization in terms of seating, blind, and project control type stuff. And then at that point, contractor being in, that's it.
Okay, so who does the police, you know, that, does TC come in and make sure that they're doing it? By the way, the report says.
Yeah, so, so what TC's been doing on the other site so far is, so once we get permits, they'll go out and they'll select their contractor. And then they actually have a TC representative out there. And then we need to talk with Brock and those guys. But any of the other sites up north that we've been working on, we've actually had a representative from our company as well out there, working with the TC chief and then also a contractor to make sure that they are following various permit situations. And not just with the city, but for all the agencies.
We have like an environmental permit perspective that we make sure the contractors are following all the terms of that. So we need permits coming out, like if you paid it to follow those guidelines. We have inspectors, Travis was alluding to the TC guys, so we do have inspectors that are making sure that things are being built first back.
None of the inspectors are for a number of departments. There's safety inspector, environmental inspector, chief inspector, which would cover all of it, so.
Any other questions that you guys? You guys are saying like you'd have obviously trucks and stuff coming in, would there be oversized loads, over length, over width, stuff like that coming in?
Yeah, in terms of the oversized loads, Brock, I guess I have preferred views, and my understanding is yes. And we were, the turning radius and stuff they were planning in and out, but I hear anticipating that.
There, yeah, there likely will be some.
Yeah. Anything else, I guess, from the summary table?
No, I, because I read through that a couple, three times. Some of the stuff on our deal, really a little pain to you, as far as heights and setbacks and stuff like that. What do you think, you guys, should we kind of close the hearing here?
We're going to open up.
Well, if you're going to have any hope, well, I mean, let me throw in one.
That's going to stay in the hearing, right?
Just to be sure, so your, your primary vehicle access will be down kind of in the center of the property, yeah?
Yeah, well, they'll be down at the southeast corner. So there's, there's an existing intersection just on the north side of the railroad. I didn't, if you have, if you want, I just.
So it'll be close to that intersection?
Yes, it'll be really close to that, and that's, that's mandated by Nebraska D O T. So after further discussions with that, that's where they told us they want us at.
That would be your main entrance, then?
Correct.
Will the secondary entrance still be down?
Secondary's, secondary's still being discussed with them at this point. Right now, they're only considering just the primary one for the moment. So we're still working with them on the possibility of a second. And then, like I said, the rest of the application package really is the same as what you folks have seen before. It's summarized in the front end of the table. One of the items I'll point out real quick, so the noxious weed management plan, that was submitted previously when we were contemplating both the camp and the contractor yard. So there's going to be some language in some of these sections that while it still references camp, for example, it doesn't matter if there's a camp involved or not. The weed management plan is the same whether we have camp, contractor yard together or split apart. The only change on that sec, on that section is that we added some correspondence related to how the weed manager review. Similarly, the geopector court's another one of those sections, for example, that a camp is referenced in there. But whether a camp's there or not, it doesn't change the boring log, for example. It's still, it's still all relevant information with it only being a contractor yard. So just so there isn't any confusion on that. And then one of the final sections I'll point out that's slightly different is the COVID nineteen plan. That was updated to reflect the fact that this is a contractor yard only. So there's some different management procedures of how they go in controlling things and testing and all of that to reflect the contractor yard versus, you know, a site where you have a bunch of people there.
That's mainly a company deal, right? As far as setting that.
Our, our stocks on COVID nineteen?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's a TC Energy. We work with the local health department based on what the, you know, local specs are. But as a company, we've gone kind of above and beyond what the local health department is firing.
They'll have, they'll have daily, uh, budget check, wellness check, if they're not going well, they're not going to return it out to a court for work. Like we are now. And then we just get to their health.
As far as the topsoil being removed, how deep down do they go?
Uh, what they require is the standard across the TC project is minimum to twelve inches or wherever you see a color change or whichever it lasts. So if there's only four inches of topsoil, you strip four inches, set it aside, and then you do your thing. If there's sixteen inches, for example, they strip up to twelve. And then from there, they continue doing what their construction, unless for some reason the use is such that, you know, the remaining topsoil that's going to be there is going to cause an issue, it's going to do a strip more in order to make it usable for, you know, the intended purpose.
Well, would you guys do that, that's, you got to do some grading, grading so the west is higher than the east, is that all?
Yeah, and, and with this, so with the camps, we usually do a lot more grading in order to make things work, you know, from a road standpoint, the internal of the camp, water, sewer, et cetera. In the case of contractor yard, there's not nearly as much grading as you would have with a camp. It's truly get the topsoil cleared off and out of the way, and then otherwise, just kind of level out the high and the low spots. And just make it so it's, you know, passable for the large equipment. And beyond that, put the gravel down in the limited area where we need it. That's about it. Contractor yards are pretty, pretty minimal for the grading. We try not to do more than we have to, just because from the standpoint of everything that we're doing out there from a grading standpoint, when we leave, we got to put it back, so why move more dirt to the other end too?
Couple of questions from the board. We could open the questions up to the audience, if they got anything they want to have.
And if you want to make the point or somebody wants to speak, you maybe recognize them, have them hand up so we have a clear one at a time presentation.
Hi, Brian Schloty, the mayor. I'm just going to, the question, like when you do your wellness checks in the morning, are you still tentatively planning on having like a mid-level provider or an infirmary? Or is that part of the plan?
So the infirmary was really for the camp.
Right.
We may end up having like an E M P on site because, you know, to address things, not just COVID related, but.
Right.
So there's, there's that, we would not have a specific infirmary.
It'd just be one of the buildings that you're already planning.
Right.
Thanks.
Are we going to have other questions? Everybody? We got any other questions, anybody interested?
Mine is kind of procedural, I guess, I'm, I was asked to livestream the meeting, so I'm doing that. Do you want me to read questions from here? Do you care? Do you want them to be in person? Somebody just needs to decide, so I'm not jumping back and forth and trying to ask questions that don't matter. And I understand that the questions are only for the board, they're not for the applicant, so they're only questions that would be directed to you, I guess, but.
By livestreaming, you mean you're getting questions electronically, some?
There are some people asking questions, yes, on the stream. I did not promise that, I have not offered that to take care of those, so it's totally up to you. I just thought I would offer for those that are listening, so that they could either stop asking or.
I guess that's up to the chairman, do you wanna take questions by remote contact, essentially called in questions?
Well, some of us cannot come to the meeting.
Well, it.
So that's their way of being here.
Do they got your names up?
It does.
Is there gonna be a limit of questions? I mean, with internet, you got internet.
I'm just, I'm just asking, I don't, I'm not in charge of the hearing, I'll do whatever you tell me to do, I just said I would offer.
It's up to you, you're the chairman. Yeah, I mean, it's easily able to be here.
It's a form of communication.
But it's also not, they, you know, well, that's up to him, I mean, it's up to you, you're the chairman of the board.
This is gonna do a little quick vote, what do you think?
You're shutting out the community, that's, that this is coming to?
Well, it's open, though, the community can easily be here, too.
But they can, but some of us can't, health problems.
It, but it, it, you, you don't, you know, we didn't set it up for that either, so I'm, I'm, no.
You did and you didn't, so.
Your meetings are not covered right now as electronic under the government's order.
Yeah, that's what I was just gonna say, it'd be different if we're doing a Zoom or something like that, or, but we're not, so I, I'm for a no. Up to you guys.
I'm, I'm not asking you to vote on anything, I'm just, just saying loud enough so they know.
We're not really, we didn't discuss it.
Sure, I just thought I would offer, since they're dead.
We got another hearing yet, don't we?
You'll have a hearing for the council.
After this, we have to.
After this, that's for the council, the public hearing, yep.
Is there anyone else present that is anxious to speak to the board right now?
I did, I did, now I'll come to the podium, 'cause I have a question. Uh, I, I live on the south side of thirteen, a few miles south, and I have a school driver. I read through the application, I am a newspaper, I read through the application. I don't know if the board gleaned anything that I did not, and you can ask a question if you think it's appropriate. I mean, five to seven is not exactly our high traffic times, but we do have a number of people that go toward Norfolk on the thirteen. Would it be possible, it's not really a question, maybe a suggestion, would it be possible, get some look again signs, the sun is coming up right there. If we're coming northwest and we're trying to go southeast to Norfolk, maybe that's a consideration. I have a school driver that will be crossing that intersection every day, not between five and seven most times. But anything we can do to help, I don't know if it's like this convoy of two hundred cars or what you intend to see. If it's fifty people, it's probably, probably won't notice, but if it's a big gathering of convoy from Norfolk to town or whatever, just something to consider, that's a, I wouldn't call it a dangerous intersection necessarily, but the train thing works sometimes. And the other intersection down by the sewer lagoon is perhaps the one I'm most concerned about, but the sun's coming up in that area, we've had some issue there just in the last couple of years, so I hate for anything bad to happen, just a suggestion, okay? Thank you.
Now, is that, would that be in with your DOT?
Yes, part of the DOT discussion would be exactly that, figuring out what sort of sign, additional signage they wanna have. Maybe some additional strapping for no passing zones and reduce speeds, things like that, so. I think if you guys ended up having some suggestions for what you'd like to see, we'd definitely take it to the state and say, you know, this is what the city's proposing. And what I would expect is that, you know, that's kind of our minimum benchmark, but I expect the city will, or, excuse me, DOT will have standards in line, you know, with MUTCD and stuff, that, and they're gonna require a lot of that stuff all that you really want, so. But by all means, if you have suggestions for what you'd like to see, we'd love for it to hear it, and we'll take it to the state, but I think ultimately they'll make that decision.
I don't kind of, during that time, Reggie Brook would be your school bus.
Right.
I think that crosses the next mile down, don't it?
I guess I'm not a hundred percent sure if it comes up on SNA or if it comes up my route, I'm not a hundred percent sure of that, so.
Well, I know they picked my grandson up, I thought they went straight north AM.
Oh, okay, remind, I, I honestly don't know.
I think they got two pickups on the other side of the highway, and they come into town.
Okay, sure.
So say we got three bad intersections in there, the school bus is crossing back and forth.
Do you guys, like Brooke asked, do you guys have a number of, like, workers that would, an average, become?
We, we don't know an exact number yet, but we, we anticipate that there's going to be several hundred folks coming into the, the yard.
Every day?
Yeah, and so you'll see, you'll see an influx in the morning, and then you'll see after the, the meetings take place and everybody starts heading out to their respective areas on the right away, you'll see some additional traffic flow at that point. And then in the evening, when people are coming back to the yard, you will see a peak in that particular period, too. Travis talked, Travis talked about this earlier, but one of the reasons that the, we're moving, they moved the guard shack back, because before we were gonna badge people as they come in, so we're moving that back out of the way. And so people will just be able to drive straight in and drive out without the need to stall on the road to get in. So people will then be checked and batched as they walk into the facility rather than as they're driving out. So we, we anticipate that that will resolve the issue.
Now, your five to seven, that's gonna be the time for the flux to come in, correct?
Yeah.
Now, when, when will they go out after that, whenever the meetings are done, eight o'clock, ten, whatever?
Yeah, I mean, unless they do like an extended safety tailgate, if that happens in the long term. Usually the, the meetings are about an hour, and everybody heads out.
I know the large majority of them on that point, you know, will be getting into vehicles together and taking off a mass transit, for example.
The only other problem would be, it's about a quarter to eight, eight. There's a steady stream of kids coming from Brunswick, in the cars.
And now they gotta be in class by eight, something before then.
Oh, I cross the highway sometime at eight.
Well, I, I do some, they're supposed to be there some. Eight o'clock, eight o'clock class start, so they're supposed to be into the, the class by then, so.
And I've sat there as high as ten minutes waiting to get across the road.
So now do most of them, like you said, they carpool right together, is there buses or anything that?
Well, some of these guys are gonna be staying, you know, maybe there might be some lodging here, but then they stay out there, it's in a room or they stay at a hotel, or they're RV parks, there's Norfolk as well, O'Neill. So the workforce will, will find lodging where they can and then come in to the work locations. So busing people into the, the camp location really isn't feasible.
I mean, like, go for it?
Oh, yeah, yeah, to the right away, yeah, to the right away, where we can, and, and all that also is dependent on, on COVID. We will bus people out to the right away. But likely some will be driving, because you'll have specialized folks that take your own gear.
But your general labors and, you know, the non-trades, like you said, yeah, they'll be getting on buses and going out and everything.
Any other kind of questions from anybody? As far as our questions on camera and stuff, I think that would be a good idea, if people would just make note of what they wanna know. They can get ahold of one of us. And, never mind how to change it. We'll have another chance to ask some questions and stuff. Let's kind of work it that way this time, like I said, we weren't really ready for that kind of stuff. Well, if there ain't no more questions, we'll kind of come out of the hearing part. My kind of proposal is, well, your regular meeting is essentially reconvene now, I mean, you need to discuss between yourselves and, or you wanna move ahead. I'm gonna throw the polls aloud that we take and work off our notes and stuff. At least a week, something like that. We really ain't got nothing, we gotta have our regular meeting next Monday. I don't know how much time you think you need to contemplate on this stuff to kind of think up some questions. Do you wanna make a motion tonight?
Well, I'm willing to make a motion to, tonight, I don't know if anybody else is ready or not, but I am.
No? Yeah, motion made, you got a second?
Well, I have to, I have to recommend, I'll recommend it, that's my motion, I recommend to pass it.
You recommend it to the city?
Yes, to recommend it to the city.
We've come out of public hearing, are we still in public hearing, or are we out of public hearing now?
Right, yeah, we're still in public.
Sorry.
That's, that's really your role, remember?
Yeah, just passing it on to, to the board, if it's.
I recommend to pass it on to the board. You're recommending to approve, that's.
Yep, to approve, pass it on to the board.
I'll second that. A second? You got moved to pass it on, you got a second?
Yes.
Oh, yes?
Yes.
Yes.
She carried it, yeah. I moved, I was looking down, all, all voted in favor.
All voted in favor, yes.
Well, I moved to adjourn.
A second. Yep, yes.
Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you.